Uh, her husband passed away about two weeks ago. He had dementia, terrible. And I talked to her today a little about it and I figured out that...
She said she's one of your number one... I don't know about her dad, but I'm...
I'd like to call the Malmell City Council meeting to order. Councilmember Mosley will not be in attendance with us tonight. He sent me an email late this afternoon, said he would not be able to be here. Next item of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'm gonna lead us in that tonight.
Our most gracious heavenly father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community in which we serve, Lord. We'd ask you to be with us tonight as we go about the city's business and help us to make wise decisions and give us your insights so that we may do so, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our first responders that serve our city, Lord, keep them safe as they put themselves on the line for our citizens, Lord, and come to their rescue at numerous times during the day and night, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our servicemen and women that are serving overseas, Lord. We'd ask you to protect them and keep them from harms way. We've just had the Memorial Day weekend where we've honored those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, Lord. We want to remember their families at this time that have lost loved ones in the defense of our liberties and freedoms for this country, Lord. At this time, we'd ask you to help us to be an inspiration to those that we come in contact with in our city and help us to treat one another with kindness, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of special guests and announcements to take care of tonight. The first one that we're gonna do is related to our Malmell Youth Council. And so we have a couple of awards presentations, and we have the Patents here with us tonight to help give out those awards. And Kevin Cummings, our city employee that's over that is here tonight, our activities coordinator that takes care of that. But the two major awards that are handed out are the Payton Award and the Malmell Youth Council Payton Scholarship. And those are determined by a board of five Malmell residents. And the Malmell Youth Council just completed its 24th year in existence in Malmell. And Kevin's done it for about the last eight and has done a remarkable job of growing that program and making it something that the students can be proud of being part of. Over the past eight years, Fred and Mary Payton have contributed over $4,000 to the Payton Scholarship along with sponsoring many other Malmell Youth Council events and city events. This year, the scholarship also received an additional $500 contribution from council member Marion Scott and her husband Doug Coney. Savannah Fikes is this year's recipient of the Malmell Youth Council Payton Scholarship award, $1,500. She served two years on the Malmell Youth Council, including this year as the mayor. And I think she told me in Washington she was gonna take my job one of these days. So... Carolyn Elliott is the recipient of the Payton Award, which annually recognizes an outstanding member of the Malmell Youth Council. Carolyn served the maximum of three years on the Malmell Youth Council, including this year as First Alderman. Both Savannah and Caroline attended the National Legal Cities Congressional City Conferences this year in Washington DC. Both Savannah and Caroline just graduated from Malmell High School. Savannah will be attending Arkansas State University in the fall, and Caroline will be attending Belmont University in Nashville, Tennessee. So at this time, we want to get them up front and present them with their awards. So Fred and Mary, if y'all would come up please, and Kevin?
So Fred, I'll let y'all present the check. So, yeah, yeah. Well, as always, it's our pleasure to be a part of this group, this youth council. We think that, I told them at our banquet, at their banquet, that I think our country's in good hands with the youth coming up, especially with this youth council, that we had some really great representatives this year. And it's our pleasure, along with the colleagues this year, to present with you this check for $1,500.
Thank you. And Mayor, you should be careful. They're girls. Because they can very well end up being...
Luckily, she's gonna be living in Jonesburg for about a year.
But that won't last long. About four years.
Mary, would you like to tell us about the fact of how it's presented?
Yes. Which, uh... Every year, we meet a group of five people, and we select from those who, those applicants, who have applied for the awards. And it's not an easy task. It's a very difficult task, more so than you would think. They're all great ladies and young men, and I just wish we could do more than we did. They deserve more than we did. So, um, thank you very much. And Kevin, as always, you've done a great job. Now, let's see. This is the best...
Senior bunch.
This is the best senior bunch ever. Last year was the best.
Last year was the best group ever. And these two were a part of it. This was the best senior class.
Yes, and they have been, this has been a great year. They've done a great job. Thank you.
And I think while they were in Washington DC, you got interviewed by the press in DC. Is that correct, Savannah?
Yes, I got interviewed by a Washington correspondent for...
Fox 16. Yeah. So, so they called me to track them down while I was in DC, and so I told them where to find them at. I got a good touch to find them, but it was a great deal, so they were able to...
Washington.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. We have Mr. John Kraft was with us here tonight. He's gonna be presenting the 2016 audit. And so, John, if you would come and do that. And all the council members should have received a council, or a, no, a audit delivered to their house last Thursday evening.
Well, I'm not sure it's appropriate for me to follow the views of the city, but... You did have a bound copy of the report, I believe, for you, and there's also three loose letters.
Thank you. There's three letters that were, I believe, were put in the front of your bound report. Before I get started, I do want to thank the mayor and Shannon and Tina and all the folks here that worked with us through the course of the audit. This was probably as challenging a year as we've had in a while with the change in the folks over the accounting area. And it created a difficult situation for those that were left to clean up after that. But I do believe, and our opinion in the front of the report, and the bound report states that we are confident that the financial statements as included in this report are materially accurate and complete. We feel very good about the report. It's been a lot of time put into this by the staff here and also members of my team. So I guess, I'm never sure where to really start on this. It's quite a document here, and I'm not intending to go page by page through this. We will spend whatever time you guys feel is necessary if I go too quickly through here. But probably, we'll look at the letters that were enclosed. It kind of sets the tone, I guess. There's a two, I guess there's a three-page letter that should have been in the front. This is a required document that is issued to the governing body, whether it's the board or in this case, the city council. And it's intended to bring your attention to any matters that came about through the course of conducting the audit that would be significant to you as the governing body. The first part talks about estimates and the fact that there are some significant numbers in the report that are estimates, just so you're aware of that. You estimate the amount of uncollectible receivables. We estimate the useful life of your assets. And then there's a estimate of what your retirement liability is. Those are significant numbers, and they are estimates. We believe they're accurate. But it's just to call your attention to the fact that it's not a hard and fast number. But then there's also sections to cover difficulties encountered in performing the audit, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, disagreements with management. And then it does document the fact that management has signed a letter which represents that they take responsibility for the accuracy of the financial statements. There were no disagreements with management. There were not any corrections that were not made that we identified. And the only difficulty was really just the fact that there was a lot of things that had not been addressed by, during that interim period that needed to be addressed. So all in all, that's a positive document. There's not any problems that we felt needed to be called to your attention. There's a one-page letter that is intended to, it's also a required document, and it's to call your attention to any weaknesses in internal control or breakdowns in the controls over compliance that are worthy by their significance to be included in the bound report. In the report, they would be considered findings, is the terminology. Here, they would just be items that we would call your attention to. The intent is, is that the governing body, again, is, has those significant weaknesses called to their attention without having to wade your way through this entire document. There were no findings of internal control or compliance breakdowns that we felt warranted to be in the bound document, and that's what this one-page letter says. Then you have a third document, and we're gonna load you up with paper this time, tonight. But it's a two-page letter, and this is a, what we consider a management letter. It's not required to be given to the governing body. It's traditionally given to the management of the entity. And it's areas that we thought management should be aware of, but not significant enough to be disclosed in the report. This year, there were several, more than we ran into in the past, so I think it's appropriate that we discuss a couple of these tonight, just in, well, I guess, to be totally transparent with the city council, and also given the fact that there's been other documents circulated making accusations and so forth. So if you look at that document, the number one item there is the fact that there was an extended period of time when the bank accounts were not being reconciled. And that's, bank reconciliation is a, is a significant control. The fact that by the time we were here, that breakdown had been identified, and there was, the process was in place to get caught up. We did not feel like it warranted being a finding in the report because the system had, was correcting the problem itself prior to us coming on board. But it is a significant area, and that did occur during the time that you had a person in place that is not here. And so Shannon is diligent in trying to get that back to where it needed to be, and that took some time. And we're not, if that had not been corrected on its own, or if your people here had not identified that issue yourself, and it was still an existing absence of control, it probably would have been significant enough to be in the report because bank reconciliations is a very significant step in internal control. Then we've also addressed disbursement procedures, and we've given you a little more detail than we might in some cases, just so you can see the type of things that were not being addressed as maybe they should have been. Again, you have a situation where we did not find any expenditures that were not appropriate or misuse of those during the period of 2016. Again, if there were dispersments that were not subject to all the steps in internal control that should have been, and they were inappropriate or misuse of funds, that would have been significant enough to be a finding. Payroll procedures, again, you know, two out of 35 were missing time sheets or whatever. Once again, there was no indication that there was money misused or that people were paid inappropriately. It was just that in order for the control to be functioning as it should be, it should be documented. So anytime that that's not documented, to us, that's an absence of the control in its fullest extent. Same type of thing. If we had found dispersments to people that were inappropriate or people that were not even employees, those type of things, which unfortunately we have found in other places, that would have been significant enough to be a finding in the report. And then we have a situation where the stipends for education, that's, the requirement is, is that the employee provide evidence that they are obtaining the classes, met the qual- qualifications that were required. Our only finding was that there was not documentation of that in the employee's file when we looked. And so we, you know, it may have been provided, the belief was that it was provided, they were, in every case, they were able to provide that documentation after we identified it. We're just suggesting that it be in the file. So there's no question on anybody's part that it was properly approved. And then automobile allowance, the same type of thing, where there was no documentation in the file that that allowance had been approved. So when we're doing the audit, we don't know what somebody did unless it's documented. And it's also a better control for the city if the documentation is there rather than somebody's memory or somebody believing that it was done or what have you. So bulk of that is just recommending that things be documented a little better than they were. Now if we go to the report, the bound report, the first part that you'll see talks about management discussions and analysis, and that's subject to our review. We don't draft that necessarily, as much as we just make sure that the numbers and statements in here do not conflict with the audited financial statements. And we did not find any cases where that was, where they did not agree. And that runs through page 12, I believe. And then you go to the financial section, and we have a statement of net position, which is similar to a balance sheet for most businesses. You have a couple sets of statements in your report. There's what's considered a government-wide format, and then what's more of a fund accounting set of statements. And they don't necessarily conflict with each other as much as there, for instance, on page 13, the statement of net position shows property, plant and equipment, depreciation, those type of things. And it shows certain liabilities that are not included. If you go to page 15, which is the balance sheet using governmental fund balance account or fund accounting. And so it's a difference in disclosure. It's not that one statement necessarily conflicts with the other. And then similarly, you have a statement of activities on page 14, and you have a statement of revenue and expenditures on page 16, that once again is just disclosing the information under a different format. And for your real reading, enjoyment and pleasure, if you go to page 17, there's a reconciliation tying the two together and why this is in one and what's not in the other. And if you're reading through that tonight, you want to give me a call, I'll help you understand that in detail once you wake up. Then, and these, I don't want to make a lot of this too much because this is, you know, the financial position of the city, which does show, if you go on page 13, that you have a very positive net position of the city with your assets exceeding the liabilities by a total of $48 million, which shows some strength to me within the city. And that is, to me, is less clear on page 15, although that's a required statement. 13 takes into consideration your fixed assets and the debt, which to me is a clearer picture than what is disclosed under fund accounting on page 15. Then on page 18, it begins statements that break down the various funds within the city and compare them to their budget. And again, we don't audit the budget, but we do ensure that the budget numbers on here are in agreement with the budget that was approved. And the financial numbers that are disclosed as actual have been subject to the same level of auditing as the basic statements in the front. The statement 22 tries to talk you through the cash flow of the proprietary funds. And then all of that, again, can be a little confusing in what, what is that really trying to tell me? And what, all it's trying to do is help you follow why you had more or less, like if you look on page 18, you had a net change in the fund balance, which in, let's go back. Go to page, I think page 16 is the most, the easiest to follow. And if you go through this, it would say that you had a six-point, almost $6.7 million negative change in your fund balance. Statement on page, the cash flow is just trying to relate that to cash in the bank. And the page 16 gets impacted by changes in your liabilities, is also impacted by the change in the estimated pension liability, which is a number that you guys have very little of any control over, and is an actuarial calculated number, which impacts that $6.7 million, but it does not impact your cash. And so the cash flow statement is trying to boil that down into where'd my money come from and where, how much do I have left? Then you get into the footnotes, which are rather lengthy, but they are consistent with what's been disclosed in the past. There is a, several pages dedicated to the change in the liabilities as it relates to required disclosures under the pension governmental accounting standards. There's some significant numbers, all of which are pretty much provided by the actuary, and we've just taken those numbers and folded those into your report. That's not a liability that you're gonna have to write a check for tomorrow, but it is required disclosure that you and then the reader of the reports are aware that that liability is potentially hanging out there under a defined benefit plan. Following the footnotes is, are some supplemental schedules that, again, we have checked as part of performing the audit. We have tested these numbers and ensured that they are consistent with what's disclosed on the front part of the report and the financial statements there. Again, I'm not gonna go through all of those unless you guys just really want to hear page by page. A lot of those numbers you've probably seen before. As you get towards the back, we've got some more letters that are required from us. Page 81 is specifically intended to address internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. And as I've already said, I guess a couple of times, we did not find any issues there that were significant enough to be identified in this report. And then page 83, we specifically address state laws and guidelines to ensure that you're in compliance with those, and found no instances where you were not in compliance with the various things that are listed there in that report. And then, of course, as we've already discussed, the page 84 and 85 would be where we would identify any findings that we thought were material enough to be included in the report, and there were not any. So I guess in summary, it's, it was a lot of change took place during '16 in the area of accounting and finance, and that presented some difficulties. But I think you can feel good about the fact that, that we, through all of that, there were no internal control or compliance breakdowns that we felt were significant enough to be in this report. There are some that we identified in the letter that needed to be attended to. To my knowledge, they, each of the ones in here have been. Some had already been being addressed before we showed up. So hopefully, we won't have near as many things to talk about next year because they have been addressed. But, so, I've whizzed through a fairly lengthy report in short order here. If there's any questions or areas that I did not spend enough time on, feel free to ask the questions or point me where you need me to talk.
Councilmember Vapersi?
Thank you very much. A lot of quick questions. Want to thank Ms. Shannon and City Clerk Timmons for all their work, for the cleanup crew. Thank you very much. The conditions that were meted out the five, when you did say that you, to your knowledge, has all that been dealt with, taken care of, as far as remitting those conditions following the policies and procedures that we have? I was impressed with, on page 18 and 19 and 21, that we came in almost $1 million under budget and $102,000 over revenue. I thought that was very impressive. What was the reason for that? What did you do?
Well, you gotta think back. This is back to 2016. In 2016, that's part of where we had a sales tax that they audited a telecommunications company, and so we got some additional funds because of that now. And also, as far as the expenditures, part of that goes to the time of where we, we make a budget based on maintenance costs and things like that. So if we're lucky and we don't have to repair five garbage trucks, or we don't have to repair, you know, a lot of fire trucks or police cars or something like that, we save money. And, you know, we put money in building maintenance every year. We may or may not use it.
Yeah. All three of our fund balances were up from previous year, and that was notable. 2017, what's that looking like? Two thousand and seventeen, what's that looking like?
Two thousand and seventeen was a great year.
Yes, it was. It was a good year. Now that you're, you know...
We have a new coach up in Fayetteville.
Yes. What do you think the Hogs are going to do this year?
I talked with Shannon briefly this evening, as a matter of fact, once I got here, and she is nearing, maybe already ready to submit what we call a trial balance, which is a significant step. It's really hard for us to start auditing numbers until we have numbers. And so the fact that she's nearing that point for seventeen would mean that we're well ahead of the pace that we were on for sixteen. There was, which obviously was not the pace we would prefer since we're just now hearing this report about sixteen. But that is, that does mean that we're ahead of that pace. We have done enough testing on the preliminary scale to see that the items that are in this letter do seem to have been addressed. That's a positive thing. There was some items on the trial balance or your balance sheet, your financial statements that needed some, for sixteen, needed attention when Shannon got here. If you don't have, if you've not been reconciling your bank accounts and addressing those type of items, there's going to be some things that need attention since she's been current on those. I don't anticipate running into those type of problems. So I'm optimistic that we won't be, you know, May of two thousand and nineteen giving you the seventeen report. But exactly when that's going to happen, I'm not sure. Unfortunately, what happens is when, you know, we have a number of clients that we have scheduled, and so when one goes beyond its projected timeframe, it's not like I can say, well, okay, well, I'll be back next week to take care of seventeen when we've now moved into other audits that we have going on. And it's not that it's not important, in fact, you're the most important one we'll ever do, but we do have ones that are on the schedule. So it's going to be a matter of the timing between now that Shannon has got as close to ready for us to come back, when we're going to be able to, you know, do that on our schedule. We're going to certainly try to do that as quickly as we can. My folks, my team, and I have already looked at when there might be an opening in that schedule. We have an audit coming up in July, and that has been delayed a number of times. If it's delayed again, which I'm not necessarily hoping for, but if it is, that frees up a couple of weeks in July, that we would be able to come here. If that doesn't change, then it would be beyond that. Some of our audits, we do an audit in Jonesboro, we do an audit in Helena, we do an audit in beautiful downtown Durham, Arkansas. And those, when they're out of town, it's harder to adjust them. So, but we'll do what we can, and I'm confident we'll get it done sooner than we did for sixteen.
Thank you.
Not sure that was a direct answer, but that's as good as I can do.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
Thank you for this thorough report, and I think that you'll agree with me when I say that we are very grateful for Tina and Ms. Vega. They're really pulling us out of the mud on these things, and we appreciate that. And another thing that I really appreciate is the consistency that we have with Craft Beach. I know that when you do something for the same company year after year after year, you can tend to catch things that someone else might not see. And I think it was during one of the finance committee meetings that you stated, you know, that you found a number that perhaps would not have been caught by something like a legislative audit, because legislative audits, if I understood correctly, are more interested in procedural things than they are in numbers. Am I misstating that?
No. We are, you know, we're doing a financial audit. We audit and test internal controls over compliance and financial matters in order to be able to express an opinion on the financial statements. Legislative audit, not, it's not a right thing or a wrong thing, but legislative audit is more focused on compliance with the state directives on how things should be done and on internal controls that are more, more as far as it has to do with the control rather than the financial impact of that control. And so where, if there's a, like, in these findings, if these findings did not have, we did not feel like they had a significant financial impact, then they're not as relevant to us as they would be to legislative audit, where they might, you know, be reporting on the fact that your control was not followed in a very minor dispersment, which would not have any real bearing on the accuracy of the financial statements. So it's just what their focus is versus what our focus is.
Okay. Anyway, I appreciate the credibility that you bring to these audits, and I know that it's a lot of work, and thank you very much. I did have one question for the mayor. I noticed that in the management letter that was provided to us, some of the items appear to be departmental, like employees not signing things or supervisors not signing off on things. And do we have, I know that there are, you know, procedures in place, but how are we keeping an eye on those procedures to make sure that they happen?
Well, it should, when, if it's related to a time sheet or something like that, it should be caught when it goes to HR. And what typically would happen on something like that is employee may be out on vacation or supervisor may be out on vacation, and they have to go ahead and turn the time sheets in in order to get payroll done. And then that sheet should be returned back to the supervisor, returned back to that employee, and it wasn't being done. If you also remember during sixteen, we didn't have an HR director at the same time. So that may be some of that. If you look at the dispersments, a lot of them reference the finance director did not sign off. We also were without a finance director from, any finance director from May until October of two thousand and sixteen. And so I think a lot of those were just missed because of not having people in certain positions. Now, I'm not going to say that you're not going to find one, that someone's going through a time sheet and they flip a page and skip signing, because I signed thirteen time sheets every two weeks, I guess. And so, you know, I have to make sure that I've got those, and then also, the leaf sheets will usually be attached to the back of those time sheets. Then I've got to get those, too, if they haven't already had their leaf sheet signed in advance. So that's why I think it occurs, but with Jared in place now, we're doing a better job of checking those, and with Ms. Vega in place, we're doing a better job of checking the dispersments and everything and make sure that everybody's initial off. I know that if, there has to be two people signed, so it's either Ms. Vega or Ms. Timmons, or I'm in that mix if one of them is out. So it puts me in that role also. So one of the, two of the three of us has to sign off on the dispersments each week.
So it's not a training issue, it's just a matter of missing something once in a while?
That's what I think it is. Yes, yes. And I, I mean, I don't know the specifics, I mean, because they list two out of forty-one or twelve out of fifteen or whatever, but I'd have to, we'd have to go back and look exactly and see which ones they were. But I know that there was a point where I think we were without some key positions that affected a lot of that in two thousand and sixteen's audit. And we, to the best of my knowledge, and John and I hadn't talked a lot about the two thousand and seventeen audit, but I don't think we had anywhere near the number of deficiencies in the two thousand and seventeen audit. They've actually been here, done that, looked at all the records, and now Ms. Vega's working on getting them the trial balance for them to then work on, so.
That's all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Holt.
Thank you, sir, for coming. As you see, my book has a lot of notches in it. I won't take up time tonight to go through it. I've spent about eight hours. The mayor potentially is going to request us to accept the vote tonight, but I'm going to request that, respectfully request that perhaps we could delay the vote one week or one next meeting and so, and give it for our oversight committee, just sit down in-house figures and maybe impose one more time on Ms. Vega to come with us. Let us just look at the figures for our own in-house. I don't, there's no question about what's there. We know what we know. And then come back to the council and just make a recommendation. I don't think the roof would fall in. There are a few holes in the roof, but maybe it won't fall in. So I would make that request if we could consider that for tonight, but I'm satisfied with the audit. I've looked through it until I'm blind, and I think it's, I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm not going to say that can be done since Mr. Mosley is not here, and the oversight committee, I think, had scheduled a meeting for the nineteenth, which is the day after the next council meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Timmons? So that means it's delayed till after the end of June, and that is going to be a problem.
I agree with that. I don't, I didn't know, I don't know if he could up it to a quicker date or not, but it's a very important, I think we all agree, it's incredibly important. We've gone through a lot of agony over all of this, and I don't object to anything. I just would like to have the oversight committee, five or six of us, sit down and discuss it, what it means to us, and then come back and go from there. Maybe he could up the date of it on, perhaps.
Okay. I'm not sure about that.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, is this going to be posted online or is it already online, or do we have to wait until we voted on it for it to be posted?
It is not posted online, and it will be posted online after the council accepts.
Okay, okay. Well, I would, I would like to go ahead and have that done because our city has been waiting long enough for this two thousand and sixteen audit to be posted, and I think it'll put a lot of questions to bed once it's posted and people can go get the answers that they need. And putting this off another two weeks, I don't think is very prudent.
That's a motion to accept the audit tonight?
Yes. I make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to accept the two thousand and sixteen audit as submitted tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion?
I'm satisfied.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
And there's still nothing to keep the oversight committee from looking at this audit and discussing it. I mean, Mr. Kraft, and I talked about it, this is Mr. Kraft's audit, technically. Now, it's his findings and all that, so if you, even if you deny the audit, I don't know that he would change a number in it. I mean, you might ask him that, but he might, he might change some wording, but I don't think he's going to change a number, but.
Well, if there was a question about something within the report that warranted a change, we would certainly do that, but if we felt like there was something in there that warranted a change, we would have already changed it. But what I would offer is that I've met with the oversight committee, I believe you were there just several weeks ago, and to address some things specifically that they wanted to discuss. I would be willing to come back and meet with them again if they wanted me to be there or if they wanted somebody internally and me, whatever. And I think most of you would know how to get ahold of me, and if there are questions by anyone on the council that, when you, I'm sure that you'll spend some number of nights each week looking through this, if you see that there's something in there that you'd like to know more about or something about, you know, what's going on with the seventeen audit, you can either call me directly or funnel that through Timmons, Tina Timmons, the mayor, whoever's appropriate. And, I mean, I'm very willing to be at your disposal to answer questions as they come up, whether it's the oversight committee or anybody individually, so.
Thank you, John.
Feel free to do that.
Councilmember Timmons.
I just wanted to thank you for, Ms. Kraft, for coming to the oversight committees and really explain, I mean, they've been like two and three hour meetings, and you've gone through with us, you know, line after line after line along with Shannon and Tina. I just want to give you, let you know that we really appreciate your time and efforts and patience with us.
That's true.
Because they haven't been easy.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. Certainly, that's, I feel very, I do want you guys to feel very comfortable contacting me at any point to try to clarify things. We've been doing the audit for a number of years and do like to think we know a little bit about what goes on at the city of Mammell. And so, anytime, we'd be delighted to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, Mr. Kraft.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I want to go back to one question that Councilmember Vapurzian asked earlier. He's like, you know, what's two thousand and seventeen looking like? Well, I don't think we're going to show that we have a million dollars in reserve. Now, I remember looking at the financials in December. I hadn't seen the trial balance, but I don't think it's going to look near as good as two thousand and sixteen. But you also remember, we purchased a four hundred thousand dollar fire truck or five hundred thousand dollar fire truck in two thousand and seventeen, so that was a pretty big capital expenditure that went out of that budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of the minutes of the May twenty-first regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packet, are there corrections or additions to those minutes?
To approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion? Motion is approved. Did I say, did anybody say no? I don't even remember any. All right. All right. Public comment. I have one card listed under public comment, but it's under resolution two thousand and eighteen dash thirteen, so we'll deal with that when we get to it. Financial statement review, even though we've had a financial statement, that's not the one we're referring to. That will be done at the second meeting of June. Department reports, and because we were doing the audit report tonight, we decided not to do department reports, and it was actually even suggested by the council at the last meeting. So that will be done at the first meeting in July. Procedural motion, I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Second.
Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the third reading of orders number nine fifty-four, adopting a master street plan map. Ms. Timmons, if you'd read that by title only.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Mammell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine fifty-four, an ordinance adopting the master street plan map and description for the city of Mammell, Arkansas.
Motion to approve ordinance nine fifty-four?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number nine fifty-four. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzian.
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Motion passes with seven yes votes. Next item on the agenda is the Rock Region Metro Board appointment. We have a, the Rock Region Metro Board is, if you don't know what that is, it's what used to be called CADA, Central Arkansas Transit Authority, and we had a representative from the city. It was, originally, it was Ms. Nicole Vogler that served as our representative on that board, and then Mr. John Todd took her place to serve on that board for several years, but he came and told me, I'm ready to give it to somebody else to serve on that board. And so he said, I'll stay till you get somebody, but I'd like to be off by June. So we're trying to honor his request, so he's not going to have to attend the June meeting if y'all make this appointment tonight. And we did have Ms. Julia Everett apply for the position. She is with the Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce, so I think most of y'all know her and have seen her around. She's involved in all their events and then also just involved in the community with school activities and teaching gymnastics. So, Ms. Everett, if you want to just please come up and just tell the council a little bit about yourself and then... bit about yourself, and then we'll see if they'll put you on the board so that Mr. Todd can get off.
He's already passed the baton.
Oh, has he?
Well, I've been with the chamber for about two and a half years, and I'm just getting more and more involved in our city. And I saw this as a way to, another way to serve my city and to give back. Anything else?
All right. Any questions?
Point, Ms. Everett.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Everett.
Congratulations to Mr. Todd.
You can tell her where to go and when to be there, John.
I will attend the first meeting with her.
Oh, there you go.
That's good. That's nice.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Resolution 2018-13, council support of playground and splash pad. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution 2018-13, a resolution declaring the city's intent to build a playground for everyone and a splash pad if and when funds become available.
Okay. I'll let either Councilmember Anderson or Councilmember Williams speak to this. They're the sponsors on this.
I will. Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, this is near and dear to my heart. We kind of started this journey, I don't even know, a few months ago. And it's starting to come to fruition that the community is really getting involved. And in order to start collecting funds from donors and from partners throughout the city, we're going to have to have a resolution that shows that the city or the city council is behind this 100%. And so what this is doing is just giving that proof that the city is intending on building this playground once we get the funding that's available. It is stated in there that it's going to be built on city property. That decision was made by the Director of Parks Recreation. It made sense to put it in that area because the city already owned it. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood, there's no committing any general fund money by doing this resolution. This is just saying to everyone that we are behind this 100%, and I would appreciate everybody's yes vote on this. I also asked a citizen to come and speak about how we're trying to gather money from different grants and partnerships, and why this resolution was important. So whenever it's appropriate, then I would love for him to kind of give more information. Yeah, Chad. Thank you.
Councilmember Saunders? Hang on just a second, Chad.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilmember Anderson just stated, and I want to reinforce this, I have no problem with donating some of our land to this project. We have little spots of land all over, and I don't have a problem with that, as long as we don't spend general fund money on this. Because that was not the original plan. It was through donations and contributions, so.
And just to be clear, it's not?
Okay.
We're not, yeah.
Then I fully support this.
It's going to be strictly privately funded, yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Gardner can speak more to that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Mr. Gardner, I guess you're on then. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sir, Chad Gardner, 147 Scenic Valley Loop. Mr. Saunders, this is the most non-committal commitment that the city will have to make. So this is an easy one.
That's good.
One of the things that we discovered when going through the grant application process was that the foundations that are providing us the money want to see a long-term commitment to the park. There was an instance with a foundation that we're applying through that will possibly fund up to 20% to 25% of the total cost. They awarded money to another project in a different city. There's a problem, though. They did not have city support for this project. And so after they awarded the money, they were in the embarrassing position of having to go back and reclaim all of that money that had been awarded. Because while there was a committee that was on board with the idea, the city was never on board with the idea. So what this will be used for, this resolution, if passed, will be included in all of the grant applications that we submit. And that shows the foundations that we're applying to. The city supports this, and all you are doing is giving the Parks and Rec Department the go-ahead to begin construction on the park once we have privately raised funds. So it's always up to the council down the road if they wanted to commit some extra dollars to it. But right now, I say let us go after it and see what we can raise. And it would be an honor to give the City of Mammell a park that involved no public funds, you know, committed to it. If we can get donations from corporations and foundations to come in, that'd be great. So that's what this is for. This will be included in all of the grant applications that we submit to raise money. So that is it.
Very well said. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gardner. Councilmember Saunders?
Yes. Chad?
Yes, sir.
You seem to be the one that's on board with the grants and stuff. And I know that, I know that the other two council members are involved in this, too. But Alderman Mosley's not here tonight, and I think I heard City Councilmember Anderson say that we needed to be 100% on board. Do you perceive that that would be a problem? Because that's not a yes vote. Because I'd like to see this go through, too.
I can't anticipate what, how he would, any individual member would vote on this.
No, I'm talking about, the vote will be seven to one, seven yeses, and one is an absentee.
It'll show as absent on the sheet of paper. So, but I, but I think they're just saying that the council has to approve this resolution, just like they do. It's no different than any grant that we apply for, where we're getting funds from the Highway Department to construct sidewalks or whatever. The council has to pass a resolution accepting those funds. Usually, it's what we have to do with the Highway Department. It's very similar in nature, I think, that they just, everybody wants to know, yeah, we're not going to give you this money, and you're not going to, you're just going to let it sit there or something like that.
One other, one other thing I didn't mention is that a lot of these grants, they don't want to make a one-time contribution to something that may go away. They want to, they actually, some of them will come back in five, 10 years' time and check to make sure that that park that we said we were going to build is still sitting there. So that's why we have that, kind of the language in there, that the city will continue to support this and treat it as a park going forward.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we have a motion yet?
We do not have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2018-13. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your service on the committee. All right. Next item is Resolution Number 2018-14 regarding surplus property. Clerk Timmons, if you'd read that by title only, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution 2018-14, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
And this is being brought forth by the senior services to surplus a couple of mini, a minivan and a Chevy car. And Ms. Vogler's in the audience. I saw her somewhere out there. Yeah, there she is. Yeah. If you want to just tell them, I mean, I think they heard this in the budget, but you might want to explain what we're doing here, Ms. Vogler.
We have two vehicles that we'd like to request surplus of. One is an Uplander Chevy van. It was originally donated, used by the Highway Department when our numbers were so high with paratransit trips. And that's a 2008 Chevy minivan with ramp. It's an Uplander. And then the other one is a 2006 Chevy Classic. And we're requesting surplus of both those vehicles, so.
And the car is used in the medical transportation, correct?
It had been, yes, sir.
It had been, yes, yes. Okay. Councilmember Holt?
She's just answered my question. It's a 2006.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't documented anywhere, so I was going to ask what year was it? So I'm, for my personal interest in it, so I want to know. And I don't want to, I want to know, when can I bid?
You might want to read the, for my, the description on the next page.
The mayor told me, yeah. Well, I won't make you rich.
I'm assuming it'll be put on GovDeals, so it'll be open to anybody that wants to bid on it. So Ms. Timmons could let you know when that's done. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. We are talking about the red car?
This is actually the silver car. I have done a purchase order, I've routed, started the routing of a purchase order for a new vehicle that was budgeted for in the 2018 budget year. As soon as I spoke with the dealership, they are waiting to receive another shipment. It might be as much as six weeks out. Again, those, nothing's been promised. The paperwork's been submitted to the city. And once that is approved, then we would come forward again and ask for surplus of the red car.
Okay. Good. The silver car needs to go away, and I don't think you want it, Mr. Holt. Trust me. Now, the other one is the old ramp van?
Yes, sir. The original ramp van.
Now, just as a matter of information for the council, we have a new ramp van, and the old ramp van is effectively not used anymore. We just have to put air in the tires once in a while, you know? So it really needs to go away. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution 2018-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2018-14. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vogler. Next item is Resolution Number 2018-15, approving a revised preliminary development plan. Ms. Timmons, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution 2018-15, approving the preliminary development plan of a proposed lot, Lot 4, the Villa River Point Drive.
Okay. This is to, this came before the council last month with a land use amendment and a rezoning request, and now they're coming forward with their revised, or should be just development plan? Yeah, not revised. Okay, just a preliminary development plan. So Mr. Neri's here, if you've got any questions. And the engineer, Mr. Holloway's here also, if y'all have any questions for them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-15. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number 956, amending Chapter 62 of the Mammell City Code. Ms. Timmons, if you'd read by title only, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 956, an ordinance amending Chapter 62 of the Mammell City Code to account for changes in billing and collection of the solid waste collection fee, removing a criminal penalty for non-payment, authorizing the mayor to enter into a billing services agreement with Central Arkansas Water and for other purposes.
Okay. This is related to us doing away with, doing the billing in-house. So now that CAW is doing, providing our water service in Mammell, they will take over the billing on a monthly basis of the solid waste fees. And that is slated to start in September. The, and, do I, the community service fee goes away. So if you look at the ordinance, that's part of what happens, is it strikes out the community service fee completely, and then it just talks about how it will be collected on the solid waste. And that's what the ordinance is doing. And then you also have a copy of the agreement. And I just want it made very clear that in the agreement, CAW is going to charge us to collect, well, to bill and to collect. I think it's .515, is there .55?
.51.
.551, yes. Okay, it's on page three of the agreement, under service charges. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. That, that fee that they're charging us is still cost prohibitive, considering how much resources and time and collection that we have to go through, that we've had to go through in the past. Am I correct?
Well, yes. I mean, it's, we do a lot of accounting procedures on that, trying to collect and everything else. But also, just the mailing alone, it doesn't cost us that much, because we do it quarterly. But our annual cost is 50, here, I'll let you give it. I don't, I've just now seen that, I think, for the first time, so.
Well, what the city has been paying annually, and this is including the paper, the postage, the mailing, everything involved, it was about $58,000. And 58,653 was the exact number that we're spending. So going over, what, to CAW is going to save us about $8,400 per year. And because they are doing our collecting, we anticipate our collection rates being much higher, and then we won't have such a large list sending over to the county at the end of the year. So we think overall, this is going to be very cost-effective for the city.
I think it makes complete sense, and I appreciate that we're doing this. Thank you.
Well, and we would have never been able to do it monthly. And I think that's one of the complaints that you always get, is the quarterly billing and all that. So that they send, they're sending the bill to every household in Mammell monthly anyway, so it does make sense.
Yep.
All right. So this is only on first reading, and so this will be on second reading at the next meeting. And that still gives us plenty of time to get the agreement in place prior to them to start in September. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number 957, amendment to the land use plan. Ms. Timmons, if you'd read by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 957, an ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map and for other purposes.
Okay. This is a, amendment to the master land use plan. It would be going from institutional to special use residential. It's 13.18, 13.10 acres. And it's located just off of Club Manor at the end of Carnahan, where the dead end is behind the Baptist Medical Facility Building and the therapy place right there. And then it goes all the way over to Audubon Drive for a small portion of that area.
Is this a single family?
Well, it, this is just special use residential. The next item is the zoning map, and it's going from PCD to PRD. I think the developer's intent is to do single family, but they could do other things in PRD.
Okay.
We have the developer, not the applicant, the applicant is actually Baptist Health that's putting this forward, but the buyer of the property or developer is in our audience tonight, and also Mr. Neri and their engineers. Are there any questions for them? Okay, if not, it'll be on second reading at the next meeting. Thank y'all very much. The next item is the first reading of ordinance 958, amendment to the master zoning map. Ms. Timmons, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 958, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Okay, so this is the one that would change the zoning from PCD to PRD. Are there any questions on ordinance number 958? If not, it'll be on second reading at the next meeting. Next item is Resolution Number 2018-16, amending the 2018 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2018-16, a resolution to amend the 2018 Mammell general fund budget.
Okay. You have a revised resolution at your desk that's different than the one that was sent out. There was some numbers that were wrong, and we didn't know if both of them would be approved, both of the requests would be approved, so that's why there's two separate line items. both of the requests would be approved, so that's why there's two separate line items for the council to be able to do it one, one way. We originally totaled it up, but then it looked like we were appropriating more like $76,000 instead of just $38,000, so, or $38,800. So we took the line out, the third line out, and the general fund balance was wrong on the original one that you had. It was, it's a lot higher than it was in the previous one. So, Chief Ezele is here to address any questions. If you want to just, maybe just want to brief them, and this was brought before the budget, or the council at the 2018 budget process, and basically it was said bring it back in July, so that's, I think, why the chief's back, so.
Yes, part of it was. We actually, we discussed the paramedic stipend during the budget process, but I feel like it's important enough, I wanted to bring it back tonight. I also mentioned during the budget sessions that I was probably going to be coming back to you at some point in time this year, depending on how the sales taxes went and everything for a training chief. So the training chief that I'm looking to add is, is actually, it'll be fire and EMS. So they will be taking care of all the EMS and all the fire training that all of us have to have every year. I mean, it's mandated that we have annual training. It's like 192 hours per member, and we would have 36 members that would be taken care of. So they would be developing the class, delivering the class, or finding the instructor to come in and deliver the class, and also maintaining the records that go along with that. I guess a good way to tell you, or to compare is you wouldn't trust your family with a doctor that only practices two or three times a year. We've gotten really good at fire prevention, so fires don't occur that often. So in order to maintain that, we have to have this training chief in position so that we can maintain our levels, not only for our safety, but also for the safety of our citizens in the city. So that's why I'm asking for that position tonight.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. This position is, was asked for in the past even before you came on board with the city. Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of ask for a little bit of that background of that, you know, we've, this isn't something that we're just coming up with, you know?
Correct.
This is something that we've tried, been playing for, for a while.
It was approved prior to my arrival here, and for whatever reason, it was not filled. Shortly after I got here, I think several of you were here on the, on the council, I actually asked for and received permission to turn that into three battalion chief positions, which is still a division chief, but one for each shift. We have, we working with three shifts here, we have an A shift, B shift, and a C shift, so we have a supervisor, a chief officer, who actually goes out and assures the safety of our personnel while they're on the scene. So, I mean, it was approved once, and I actually changed that a little bit, but we've reached a point right now, and like I put in the paper that I gave to you guys, we have a very good chance, in fact, most of the time when we're out there, North Little Rock Wastewater talks about this is going to be our facility. So we have a proposal with them for them to donate the entire wastewater facility out there to police and fire for a training facility. So I want to get this person in place, get him to start developing his programs. Within about a year, we're hoping that that land will become available out there, and they'll be done utilizing it, so.
I think it makes sense, and I appreciate your information. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
Chief, who does the training now?
Right now, the shift, the station captains do some of it. The battalions also set some of that up, but it's, we need one person that is, their main focus is just assuring that we have the training that is required and needed.
Okay, when I read the council packet, it looks like there are some moving parts.
When you say moving parts?
Well, captain to training chief, lieutenant to captain, firefighter to lieutenant, and new firefighter.
Yes.
So there is a new position?
Yes.
Okay, and, but it's the new firefighter?
Yes, well.
The rest is just an?
The, the training chief is the new position, the rest of it's just backfill.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense to everybody, when I say backfill?
Those are positions that are there.
Okay, so the training chief position is a new position. It will be a captain that will fill that, so therefore a lieutenant has to become a captain.
So you're not going to go outside the department and get a new training chief?
No.
Okay, okay.
No.
You're just going to get one new firefighter?
We actually, we have a very qualified individual who is on the division chief list right now.
I got you.
And has actually spent tons and tons of time at the Arkansas Fire Training Academy and trained thousands of firefighters. I mean, it's a perfect fit for this individual.
Who's on our payroll now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, so you want to approve the whole thing, so?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, all right. Motion to approve, the motion is to approve Resolution 2018-16, correct?
Correct.
Okay, there here a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-16. Is there a discussion on that motion? And it's as revised that was submitted tonight, so. There's no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying?
You had a line on it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Councilmember Vapresen?
I don't, if Councilmember Mosley were here, he'd perk up. I am for this next year in the budget. This is mid-year resolution, and I am not against this, but I am more for it come October, when you come before us, so I just wanted to let you know where I was at on that. I'm not against this, but I'm against it at this point. I'd like to see where we end the year up, and when the new tax money starts coming in. So in honor of Mr. Mosley, I'll be a no vote. Right now, in October, I'll be a yes. Thank you.
Okay, you won't vote till December probably on the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think this is not something that we, that we haven't been planning for. It's, it's, we've asked the department head to put it off. He's done what he's, what he was asked to do. You know, if, if we didn't intend on addressing this midterm, as you would say, then why would we ask him to come back? That's my, you know, that's what I feel about that. I think it's something that we need to be proactive with, instead of reactive, just like you was talking about getting ready, getting our department ready for taking possession of an area that we can do training, not for just fire, but also for, for the police. And I, I think it just makes sense. You know, if, if we put things off and keep putting things off, we, we put ourselves in a posture where we're reacting to needs and, and not being able to prepare for them. So I just, I just wanted to put that in, 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 in the discussion.
I, I don't disagree at all with what you're saying. Remember that the, I don't know what your plans are now, because this property won't be available for at least a year, as chief said, so we're still.
But you got to develop your plan, too. Remember, you got to, you got to start developing how you're going to train.
Probably, in your wisdom, you've already have a plan in mind.
We, we do have the individual who would be the training chief, actually has a layout that he wants to, to put forth out there, once we get the land.
Is he currently one of the ones that are training now, that's training the guys now?
Yes, ma'am, he is.
Okay, Councilmember Holt?
Chief, I think my conscience is clear that I have certainly supported, I've never said no on a single thing that the fire department, and I support the fire in every, department in every possible way. As we discussed this at budget time, Alderman Kelly, at that point, made a suggestion that both, Chief Williams also came before us following your request, and he had a, a request of his own that he felt just as strongly about for a stipend or something for his own men who do training, et cetera. It, for me, somehow or another, if we do okay this and we don't do something for the police department, I, for me, I feel awkward about that. And yet, you know, I don't want to say, well, you know, in a way, I do support Alderman Vapresen, our councilmember Vapresen, in that if we could look at this again in December, I know we said we ought to, you know, come back, but that didn't mean that we're going to automatically okay it. Budget issues are still budget issues. I'm, I'm really in a, I'm on the middle of the rail here, so I need to fall off one way or the other, I guess. I, are we hurting in any way whatsoever in, in our, in our lack of training? Or are we vulnerable in any way right now for a lack of training if we do not put this person with that salary in place?
You're asking my opinion?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
In what way, if I may ask?
Absolutely. We, we only have, at times, 11 structured fires in this city a year. That's 11 times our guys get to go out and actually see live fire. That puts us at risk by just not having our skills honed all the time. With this training chief in position, we can get some more live fire training going. That will help us out immensely.
So it is paramedic training, is that right?
Paramedic training, we, we actually have two kind of different things going here. The, the fire EMS training chief is going to be doing the training for the entire department, which will include EMS. So our paramedics have to have 60 hours of continuing education units every two years, and it's very strict as to where that training has to be from. Some of it can be online, some of it you have to have a live instructor standing in front of you. So it's going to be this individual's job to set this up, to make sure that we're, everybody's getting the training that they need. I'll give you a perfect, for instance, I had to renew my license, my EMT license, about two months ago, and it was very difficult. And I actually ended up having to do a one-on-one with an instructor to keep my license. So, I mean, it, it's very difficult in that two-year time. It sneaks up on you, and all of a sudden, you're like, man, I've got to come up with 16 hours of training somewhere, and only a certain number of that can be online. So a lot of it, we actually have, I ended up taking, you know, attending a conference, and then I ended up doing one class, just one-on-one with an instructor.
Mr. Mayor, let me just throw this out. Would it be conceivable that if we put this training person in place, that that, a crossover from our officers would be able to take advantage of that training simultaneously with our fire department to whatever degree they, they share? And, and as the chief is anxious to do, Chief Williams, upgrade his own men at the same time? Is that not conceivable, that we could do that?
Well, we're talking about two different things. Now, the training chief issue, that, that person is to train fire and EMS. The police aren't trained in fire and EMS, so there would be no benefit to the police department for that. Okay, now, the paramedic stipend is there because the paramedics have taken over 1,200 hours of classroom and practical training to get their paramedic certificate, and then they have to have 60 hours of continuing education on an annual basis, or every two years?
Yeah, every two years.
Every two years, they have to have 60 hours of continuing.
It's a license.
So there's, there's two different things, so I don't see a benefit to the police department for the training chief. Now, if you're talking about something as a stipend to the police department, that's something totally different that, you know, now you're going to have to come up with a criteria that's similar in nature for a police officer that has that amount of certificates or that amount of training, so. But there's, the training chief is not going to benefit the police department, to the best of my knowledge, and I, I'll defer to the chief, but, I mean, he might help them, show them how to administer Narcan or something, I'm not sure if that can be done, if that has to be taught by the health department, but.
I think they take care of that on their own, but.
So our budget judgment will be 38,000?
Yes, sir, the total would be 38,000 for this year, 38,800 dollars for this year.
Does this include the stipend?
It does, it's, that's why it's listed on both line items there.
And the stipend is for a license. It's not for a certification, it's for a license in the state of Arkansas. And I know one of the questions that y'all had during budget talks is, we're a non-transport entity, which we are, but if it's a severe cardiac emergency in the city, guess who goes with the ambulance? Our paramedic. So that there's two paramedics working on that individual, it gives them a better chance of survival. Which, which was the whole reason we wanted to try to get this program going in the first place, was to give anybody who had a cardiac emergency in Mammell would have a much greater chance of surviving that.
So it would actually begin when, immediately, the training program?
July 1, yes. We would have the training chief in place.
And the, I just want to point out that this is for half a year, this is from July through December, is these amounts that are listed here. So, so you've got a training chief position that's listed at 32,556, and then you have a paramedic stipend that's listed at 6,240 dollars. That's for 2017, from July 1 through December 31st. Okay, Councilmember Williams? I mean, 2018, I'm sorry, 2018, yeah, we're talking about budget, you're right, no, I messed that up. 2018, yes, for 2018. I'm back a year because I keep thinking about the 2017 audit. Councilmember Williams?
I just need a refresher on the timeline for the new tax collection.
The new tax will start coming into Mammell September 1. The collection will start July 1. So the sales tax will be collected at the point of sale, starting July 1, 2018, but the city will not receive our first check until about September 25th, is when the first check will come in.
Is there, is a possibility that we can hold off on, on this resolution until we actually start collecting some, actually seeing a check, October 1st, maybe? September?
That's up to the council.
Okay, am I the council?
You're, you're part of the council. Say what?
We already said a motion, didn't we?
Yes, we did, there is a motion, that's accepted as it is, so that would have to be amended. That is correct. So, yeah, if you wanted to do that, you'd have to change the resolution, it'd have to be reduced in half, so, yeah. I hope that would be close. Is it all, that you had, Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to figure out who, all right, Councilmember Anderson, your light came on next.
Actually, I think it was Councilmember.
Well, she turned hers off. Hers is off now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that the police department and the fire department are two totally different departments. And we under, we sometimes get in the mindset of trying to tit-for-tat for each department. They both have two different department heads, and they ask for their, their, their needs as the department head sees fit. Right now, we need to remind ourselves that we're addressing the Department of Fire, okay? And that department head is asking us for something that he feels is necessary. It has no bearing on how many staff members are on the, the police department. If the, if that department head comes before us and asks for those, then we should address that. I just wanted to remind the council that we're talking about fire and safety, which is one of the most important things that we have to do as a city. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Vapresen?
Question for you. So you, you just got your recertification for EMS.
Yes.
Now, the city pays for that, it's in your budget for, for?
Yes, real life, sir.
For the training. So the training chief is good, we're not going to have to pay out of pocket to some other entity for the EMS training if the training chief comes in? Is that correct?
That's a good question.
Because here's what, here's what, here's what I'm saying, the money that we're going to be saving from having outsourced training to doing it ourselves, that, that's, that's what I'm thinking about right now.
Yeah, we will still have people that will attend conferences.
Right, right.
Because that's where you pick up new information.
Yes, sir.
But as far as bringing in an outside instructor, like we've done in the past, we shouldn't have to do that.
Yeah, I'd be real interested in, in seeing a number on how much.
Cost.
This might save the department, because, I know you, you can't right now, but.
Right.
Ms. Timmons, do you have a paper on that?
I don't.
Oh, sorry.
She was pretty prepared, though, I was impressed.
Councilmember Scott?
I did want to point out that our paramedics are paid commensurate with an EMT in Little Rock. in Little Rock, I believe. Their pay scale is-
Here? Yes.
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 So people who are required to take twelve-hundred hours of specialized training, ride in the back of ambulances, work in a hospital, are being paid as the same as someone who is an extended first aid provider in other cities.
Our paramedics are paid the exact same as our EMTs are here, in some cases, so.
So I'm in favor of the stipend?
It's a big responsibility.
It is.
It's a big responsibility.
Okay, are there any other questions for the chief? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixteen, amending the two thousand eighteen general fund budget. Any more discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
One, one no.
One no, six, six yeses and one no, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes. The next item is the election of a president pro tempore for the June eighteenth council meeting. My schedule will not allow me to be here at the, uh, January, or the June eighteenth council meeting, and so need to elect someone from the council to sit in this chair and run the meeting, so. Uh, Councilmember Scott?
I think in the past, we've usually had our senior, uh, council member do that, and would that not be?
Before we do this, I've done this too many times. Um, I do have another idea, so can I go ahead and answer?
If she gives you the four.
The floor is yours.
You'll notice, you beat me to the button. Actually, um, Councilmember Anderson has been here as long as I have. We are the two seniors. And I think in a perfect world, every one of us should get to do that. You know, it's an experience if you've never done it. So, um, and I, I think it would be, um, appropriate for Alderman Anderson.
Second that motion, we got a third?
A third and a fourth.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to appoint Councilmember Anderson as president pro tempore for June eighteenth council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
Passes six to one, so.
Sorry, Rick.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. Um, next item is mayor's comments. Uh, just, uh, on Memorial Day, we had our event out at the Veterans Memorial, and I had a hard time counting the crowd because there were so many people there. Uh, but we had three hundred programs and we handed out almost all of them, so we think we had somewhere between two fifty and three hundred there in attendance, which I think is one of the largest crowds we've had attended. And that's what several people commented to me, is that this was our largest one. Uh, it was not cool, it was relatively warm, uh, but it was a great event. Uh, Bubba Beeson did a great job on the keynote speech, and we honored Gold Star families that were there. And actually, they were part of the ceremony from Paxton, leading the pledge of allegiance, a little seven-year-old boy, I think, or six-year-old boy. And then, uh, uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, placed the wreath. Uh, his son was the first, uh, uh, Arkansan that was killed after nine eleven. He was killed in, uh, two thousand and three, uh, and, uh, killed in Iraq. Uh, Michael Van Johnson, Jr. And so, uh, very moving event, I thought, and a very good event and well-attended, and we appreciate everybody that came out to that event. Next item is the annexation committee, and you should have had a list of the people that were on the annexation committee in your packet, if I can just find that list now. Uh, and this is based on emails and everything, and so, I mean, it's not all-inclusive, uh, as far as everybody, but this is everybody that I could tell that actually at one point in time were either a voting member or had requested to be on it. Uh, and so, uh, John Vapurzan agreed at the last meeting to chair the committee, and then Rick Anderson was on it previously as a council member. Marion Scott was on it previously as a citizen, and so now she's on it as a council member. And then Jack Stowe was the city's representative, and RJ Mazzoni had requested to be on it, uh, as a citizen. Uh, Barry Heller had been on it because he was with Maumell Water Management. And so I replaced Mr. Heller since there's really not anybody at CAW that we have constant contact like that. I'm not saying we wouldn't have to bring them in possibly on some of it, but I think we could just talk to someone from there. So put him in that position, and then Mr. Todd was representing the planning commission on the annexation committee, and he has to get off that, too. I think he's bailing out on me, uh, but, uh, uh, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Fisher agreed to take his position as the planning commission representative. And, but these meetings are open to anybody that wants to attend, and so it's not like this is an exclusive group, and I'm sure this committee will listen to your input if you attend the meetings. So it's up to, uh, Councilmember Vapurzan to schedule a meeting, uh, with his committee. So, and if you need any, uh, email addresses or something, let me know, or phone numbers or something. Uh, the other thing, I just wanted to give y'all notice of the, uh, Boy Scout flag retirement ceremony will be June the fourteenth at Lake Willistine at the Veterans Memorial from five-thirty to six-thirty, if you want to go out and see a Boy Scout flag retirement. A reminder that the Arkansas Municipal League Convention is June thirteenth through the fifteenth. So if you signed up for that, uh, it will start around mid-afternoon on the thirteenth and go through about two o'clock on the fifteenth, uh, in the afternoon. And then the last thing is I put at your desk the sales tax distribution. Uh, Councilmember Scott had asked at the last meeting, did we know anything about the, uh, it's forty-five twenty-one is the number about the department stores. In March, we received about a hundred and three thousand dollars in department store sales tax. Well, as you can see, in May, they took thirty-four thousand five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars of that back. So, uh, there, they may take back more, uh, but that's what they've taken back so far. So that hundred and three thousand dollar sales tax bump in March may be fleeting. So just so that you know. Uh, and that's it. Uh, planning commission report?
That's me.
That's you, okay. And did, were you addressing the sales tax or something?
Yeah, the sales tax.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious, how long, um, can we go before they ask for money back? Is there a timeframe? You know, they're not going to say, well-
It can be, I can't remember, they changed the state law on that. I think it's eighteen months. It was three years, and I think it's been reduced to eighteen months, but, uh, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I, I think it's eighteen months now that they can go back, or, or we tried to get a law in place that said it was eighteen months, and maybe, but I think it was at one time, three years, they could go back and get that money.
Wow, okay.
And that's, that happened to us once before, that, yeah, that the, you know, the state came back and said, oh, well, we're going to give back four hundred thousand dollars because it was overpaid, and they were going to do it monthly. If it's a whole lot of money, they'll do it over a period of time. And they said, but it, but, but where it was going to affect us, if you remember, it was going to run through two-year budgets. So we said, take it all out this year. We don't, we don't want to carry it over into next year. Take it all out this year, so, uh, and that's exactly what happened. They went back over a year and, and took it out then.
Thank you.
All right, and planning commission report is Councilmember Scott?
Okay, um, well, one of them was the, uh, the plan for, uh, the Valet River Point, and we, we discussed that. And then, uh, the one about the rezoning of the property along Club Manor, I think, uh, bears some, just a little bit of, uh, more information. That's being rezoned from planned commercial, from a planned commercial district to a planned residential development. And, um, some of the salient facts that came out in the planning commission meeting was that there have been no retail hits on that property in sixteen to twenty years. So it's really not generating much revenue for the city. Uh, sixty to sixty-five single-family homes are, uh, proposed, and Mr. Brock, who is the proposed developer, does build some fine quality homes, as has been evidenced in some areas of, uh, is it Maumell Valley Estates or Country Club?
It's Country Club.
Country Club.
Chalets at Country Club.
That it would bring, uh, more families into Maumell, which would spend more money in our town, bring more kids into our schools. It could help, given, uh, visibility onto Club Manor, it could help with visibility for those businesses along Club Manor, and, um, Ms. Gillen from the chamber wrote a very fine letter in support of this, uh, to make that land useful for the city. And Mr. Nary says, one of his main functions is that he tries to help determine what is the best use of this property for the city. And in this case, because there hasn't been any, uh, retail interest in it, that making it residential and do, and generating some revenue, generating homes, generating a more vibrant area than, uh, what that hill provides, um, is probably the best use of that property at, at this, uh, point, and the staff did recommend do pass on those. Let me see, there was one other thing. And I can't remember what it is. Oh, um, in, um, Maumell Valley Estates, there, uh, is a proposal to reduce some lots on one of the phases from seventy-five-foot lots to sixty-foot lots, because the size of the homes that would be built on the sixty-foot lots are in a more desirable price range, and there's a lot of demand for them, according to realtors. Plus, they can get more homes on the property, uh, for that. So we'll be seeing something about that before long, too. That's it.
Phase eighteen was the phase.
Phase eighteen.
Yeah.
XV-one-one-one, yeah.
That's exactly right. All right, um, next item is council member comments. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take opportunity tonight to get on my soapbox. I normally don't do this, except on issues. But it came, but it, it had to cross my mind when the mayor was talking about the Memorial Day event, which, and people that know me know, as a combat vet, you know, veterans are important to me. And one of the things that I noticed, Memorial Day, from several different venues, including a person I will not name at the memorial ceremony, was greeting everybody, saying, "Happy Memorial Day." Now, let's think about that a minute. What's the purpose of Memorial Day? Saying "Happy Memorial Day" is kind of like going to a funeral and saying "Happy Funeral", you know? We're talking about people that were killed here. So I would suggest that, that you kind of keep that in mind in the future, and I think most of the vets with my background will tell you the same thing. They don't appreciate being told "Happy Memorial Day." So, and I'm sorry, I just had to get on my soapbox, it's a hot button for me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other council members' comments? Councilmember Vapurzan?
I just want to say how handsome Doug Coney is in the back of the room. Um, no. Mike is gone, Mike Hogan's gone, and, but I saw him. Oh, there he is. I saw him at the Memorial Day, uh, service, and, uh, asked him about something, and the next day it was taken care of, and, uh, I was very impressed. Just wanted to appreciate that. And, and he, he won't take credit for it because he said it was, it was on the schedule, but I thought, wow.
That was quick.
It's awesome.
Councilmember Scott?
We'll be out of town for a couple of weeks, I'm going up to see my grandkids. I will be back for the next council meeting, but just if anything gets planned in between, I'm not available. I know.
All right, Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Madam City Clerk?
No, sir.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor to adjourn, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Meeting is adjourned.
Over, under? Well, under.
We were four minutes. Yeah, four minutes long is all this meeting lasted.